Yeah, this is recorded, so make sure. And Deputy Mayor, do you want to call the meeting?
Sure. Follow meeting order of the fire service committee.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order is to elect a chairperson?
No, it's not. Audience of citizens.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. I do. Okay. I would think we'd need a chairperson for the audience citizens, but okay, we'll have audience of citizens first. Anyone in the audience care to address us?
Yeah, I do. I have one thing to say.
Sure.
You know, on Saturday, September, you know, based on the fire that we had here last year on September 27th of this year at 11:30 in the morning, the Silver Ridge Homeowners Association will be presenting a bench in honor of firefighter Starkovich Starkey, who lost his life fighting that fire and keeping the home safe in Silver Ridge. The Homer's Association has went forward earlier on, gave a donation to the fire department. Now they want, now they want to go ahead and dedicate a bench to firefighter Starkey, who gave his life, you know, fighting that fire. So I'll be at the top of the complex at the cul-de-sac at Sea Green. Again, that's Saturday, September 27th at 11:30 in the morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience? Online or online? I guess we'll close our audience of citizens. And now, elect a chairperson. Are there any nominations? Nominating anybody who went? Oh, thank you. Any other nominations? Any other nomination? Any other nominations? Oh, nominations are now closed.
Do we need a motion?
Let me switch out, make a motion, okay, to appoint Charlie Pena, so Charles Pena, so be your chairperson.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Our first matter of business is discuss the action concerning existing aid on-call program and proposed changes. Mr. Simons can enlighten us on what's going on at this point?
I'll give you a little history. So Donald Berlin has three programs to aid the firefighters. And the first one is the Robert Wolf Rewards Program, which is basically a retirement 401K in which a firefighter receives $500 put into the 401K per year for good years of service. And that is calculated off of the documents, Schedule A, has its own criteria to receive that. The second one is a rewards program. The rewards program, and firefighters call it our stipend program, that pays a certain amount of money for the level of involvement that you have in the fire department. That again, is by rank or by your requirement, but you have to do other Schedule A, not the same Schedule A as the other, as the Robert Wolf, but a different one, receive those rewards. And the third one is paid on call. Paid on call pays the firefighter $10 a point. Any incident they go to is $30 or 33 points or $30 for an incident. And that pays firefighters across the board the same. And again, there is a program or a Schedule A for that one. So what my thought was, in doing the paperwork, the documentation, and this is what the end of the year documentation looks like, pretty complicated. Any different columns with points and everything else, and we can pass this around.
On the second type of award, depending on, it's a 500, I just want to wrap my head around.
Okay, so it's 500 for Robert Wolf, or the stipend or the reward, it's paid out by their involvement. So a basic firefighter gets $800. A driver, I didn't say it, so I didn't miss it. A driver operator gets $1,000. A line officer, which is the engineer lieutenant, gets $1,200. And a administrator or a captain chief, assistant chief, that's $1,400. So they also have the requirement, that's a different Schedule A. The last one is the paid on call, which is, that was a point, and then it also pays for a certain amount of extra activities. So my thought is, I put this together and I actually put it in the budget a few years ago, never did anything with it because I'm just overwhelmed with anything. Ryan came, Ryan kind of pushed me a little bit and worked with me to get this all done.
Solid budget intuition.
Yes. So the thought is, is that we create one requirement across the board. So that that one requirement, if you make that requirement, you then get the Robert Wolf, the stipend, and your level of training, or your level of participation. Within that, I changed the level of participation just a little bit. So let me talk a little bit about this Schedule A. So for Robert Wolf, for Robert Wolf, you have to make 25 of your available calls. A firefighter is allowed to be off for 60 hours a week, which allows them to go to work and not be stocked for it. And you have to put in availability, which tells you when your time off is, 60 hours a week. And then they have to meet a percentage of their available calls. So when they're home at night or whenever they're off, they have to make a percentage of that. They also have to make 12 drills, six department meetings, and any additional activities, French fry booth, those were, you know, putting a flag up here or doing something there. And they have to make a minimum of 65 points. 65 points. So when we think about that 65 points, the first part of that 65 points is going to be their availability. So their availability, let's just say I make 30% of my calls, I get 30 points for my availability. Then the remainder of my points come out of my 12 meetings, or 12 drills, six meetings, and my activities. If they take an additional training course, such as they go for firefighter one, or they go for fire inspector, or they go for any one of those classes, depending on the number of hours that they participate in that class, you know, some of these classes, firefighter one now is 160 hours, EMT is like 180 hours now. So as those courses get more requirements to them, the higher the points are. But the thing you want to remember here is that 50% of what, 50% of the point system for the Robert Wolf, usually, usually, not always, comes out of the participation going fires or incidents. So the other, the next one, or the next two, have the same program. And that is, they require 30 points each. And they don't have any requirement to participate or to go to calls. They only have same requirements as far as training, department meetings, extra training, and activities. And they have to get 30 points for those two. So what my plan was, I sat down with this, was make one Schedule A, one requirement across the board, and you get everything. Take the fire participation that's not required in the stipend or the paid on call, to make those two. Make the participation and just make it a flat percentage across the board. So that we are now requiring firefighters to, if you want to go, because you want to, you want to get some reward out of it. In rewards, in the paid on call, well, it's really awards, not the paid on call. I can get my $1,000 as a driver and not even see a fire a year. So I wanted to make sure that they not only got their $1,000, but the town or the fire department received some recommend, some recovery that they were participating in calls. So we, I sat down and I drafted up this piece of document that was out, that has red, blue paint on it. Those were the changes. But the real changes were, well, we go through them, real changes were to this Schedule A. So what we did was, we took the two Schedule As, and we made them into this new Schedule A.
Where it's listed as page 12, is that the new Schedule A? Or am I looking at an old schedule?
So you have in your package, you have.
Well, is it this?
No. So that's, so you have three documents that are included in your packet. The first, let me just explain that, Jim. So the first, the first is the current paid on call program. I think that includes both the stipend and the paid on call. That, so that, so that explains that. And then, as Jim said, the Robert Wolf Pension Program, that's a separate document. And so that's included in your packet as well. And then the third document is the proposed changes. And so, exactly, so that has all of the proposed changes, and that's what Jim's going over.
So when we look at the changes on page one of the changes, points, the real change, the real change to that, you'll see in blue there, and that is, all that's lasting over four hours, we revert back to a dollar, dollar per hour, or a one per hour. And in that, we have not decided on a dollar amount.
The dollar amount will take in after the four hours.
So then, if we look at, so I went back and I looked at two years, I looked at the current year, and I looked at the previous year. So the current year, to date, January 1, to date, we had 467 calls this year. We have not had one over four hours.
What's the average length of a call? I know they vary based on car accident.
Yeah, the average, the average length of a call is 54 minutes.
Just, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So for something like the Hawthorne Fire?
That, that's where this all came from, actually. And, and let me, let me back up to the, when they approached me with that portion, because I brought this to the chiefs and everything, and the chiefs came back with that portion. They said, listen, we go out to a call, we spend an hour, hour and a half there, it's $30. We get $30. If we go to the dump fire, or we go to something that's major, we could spend six hours there, it's $30. Really not fair. So can we look at, possibly after a certain amount of time, reverting back to a hourly rate, much like we did at the Hawthorne Fire? Now, in real, in being realistic, those individuals that responded each day would have got $30 for 10, 12 hours of work up there. And that's where, where all that came from. So, so I, like I said, 2025 with 467 calls, we didn't go over four hours. Thank God. 2024, 770 incidents, there were three times we went over. One was the Hawthorne Fire, which obviously was two weeks. One was a mutual aid call to Weathersfield, which they were there for four hours and 41 minutes. And one was a oil truck that rolled over on Orchard Road, which we had to stand by as they drilled and drained the tank on it, five hours. It really doesn't happen a lot. It does, it does help rattle the people.
I agree with that. Jim, quick question for you too. We go through all this and it gets approved, when would this document and this new pay go into effect?
I would have to say we would probably, we get paid quarterly, so the third quarter of the year is going to come out, actually, at the end of this month. So I would say that we probably, if everything was in place by then, we could, we could pay them that, and go back and pay this and stipends and everything, that was probably would go into effect January 1.
Okay, now what?
Do that because that is when our reporting is January 1 to December 31st.
Now, that's, you know, yeah, like you said, that's not fair for somebody to, you know, be out there 10, 12 hours and get $30. I couldn't agree with you more. What, if this goes into effect, like say January 1st, how's that going to affect the rest of the current year budget for '26?
So it is all in, in the budget right now. The only thing is that we have a little problem with, and we're working on that with our budget now. And that is, we took in an influx of new people that were trained, and the South Meriden Fire Department closed.
Okay.
South Meriden.
Are they officially closed now?
They're officially closed now.
Thank you.
They tried to officially close them January 1. Their Public Safety Commission pushed back. And they had to stay to July 1st, and they came up with a plan that they were going to take firefighting duties away from them and give them basically traffic duties and things like that. And they had a sort of people that came in fully trained, firefighter two, medically trained, the whole nine yards. They dispersed on both the town of Berlin and Wallenberg. So anyway, that's, that's the backing of that. We may have a little bit of money needed towards the end with that influx of people coming in.
Okay.
And actually, one of our, you know, it's, one of our weakest departments previously, and it was only for their location, was the South Kensington or Company or Department with the influx of people from South Meriden. They are now our biggest department out there. And that's great. And they have, they have a good group of guys and gals that are pushing to get the trucks on the air timely. They are pushing to do extra duties out there, and it's great.
It's a good thing. I was just curious if there is any, you know, how, how it actually would affect the budget.
Yeah.
The budget, because you know, you're going to be coming down to, you know, the last quarter of the year, and then starting January 1st, 2026, and you know, and then, you know, the end of your budget's going to go till, you know, midpoint in the year. So that's why I was asking that.
The paid on call, the stipend part, we put into the budget.
Right. I understand that.
The stipend part, or the paid on call part, that really is how many calls we do. If we happen to have a flooding incident in town where we do a bunch of calls, if we happen to have a major storm come through, where we do a bunch of calls, or we happen to have a major fire like the Hawthorne, we'd have to come back and say, hey, this is, this is what we did.
Understood. Thank you. That explains.
Well, we, we calculate our budget off of a history. So you go back five-year history, and you come out with an average of where you're going to be. That's how you calculate your budget.
Okay.
Our calls go up 15 to 20 a year. Last year, we were at 770. So we'll be 790, 785, somewhere around that.
All right. Thank you.
Questions if I can. We're very fortunate, in my opinion, to have a volunteer fire department. You guys, they're awesome, awesome guys. When you were putting this together, and I know some, some towns have paid departments, they're on all the time. How does this proposal compare to a town that has volunteer? Is this enough, is my question, I guess?
For the paid on call?
Yeah.
For that area, but we are ahead of our surrounding towns.
Okay.
For the stipend, and I'm going to go with officers and stuff like that, we're about average. The higher officers are a little behind.
Okay.
For the Robert Wolf Retirement, actually, Newington and Rocky Hill have an actual retirement plan, which they receive payment after a certain age.
Okay.
Coming out of it, where we don't. So if we had $500 and you've been good for 10 years, you got $5,000. So that portion, we're behind on. We have a committee looking at that. I did not change any of this in here.
That's fine.
I just changed the schedule, and I just wanted to get the guys down the street a little extra.
No.
I wanted to make my job a little easier. I wanted to make.
You did a great job, and I appreciate that. And I certainly think that if that's, if there's anything we should be doing proactively, maybe take a look at it when we're doing the budget next year and incorporate, and if it's not in totality, what we should be doing a piece next year, a piece a year after that, and not wait to be chasing our tails with this. I mean, we need these guys.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I agree with you.
Fund a fire department, and let's face it, we may not see it in our day, but it's going to happen, okay? It's inevitable.
Pennies on the dollar.
This is, and that's why I just want to make sure we're funding it how we should be funding it.
You have a retention problem?
Yeah. Well, retention problem is a lot of a lot of the higher-ups are up there in age like myself. Bringing young people in. We had a program at the high school under the previous regime that was really good to us. New one, we're still fumbling a little bit, but we're trying to get people out of that. You're going to see us hit the streets pretty soon with a bunch of signs, looking for new members to come in. A new person coming in, if we can get a new person in, we can get them through training. And the hardest thing is, is to tell some individual, when they say, I want to come down, I want to help my community, I want to be a firefighter, I want to be a responder, that's great. 160 hours, you have to go to school.
They do that at night, Jim?
They do that two nights a week, and Monday and Thursday and Sunday, or Saturday, depending on where, whichever school they're at. And they do that for three, four months, you know? And to get them to actually go and do that, it's hard. So what we try to do is, we try to get their feet a little bit wet, get them hungry for it before we send them to school. Because otherwise, you send them straight to school, you know, you don't do anything in town, and then you go to school, you lose them right off the bat because they get there and it's like, what is this? So we try to get them hungry first, and then we send them out.
Okay.
And it seems to work. I mean, are we down on manpower? Of course we are. When I joined, it was over 100 members. And we're, we're down. We're at 60, 68 or 67, right?
Through all four, four fire departments.
And we have weak ones and we have strong ones. The town of Newington, who has the biggest fire department, and they're doing it. It's funny, I met with them at another, at a task force meeting, which is a mutual aid meeting. And I says, what are you doing to get these people in? And town of Rocky Hill and the town of Weathersfield are right there. We want to know, and the three of us, we want to know what you're doing. And they, they put a lot of time and a lot of money into their recruitment, and they're just, just capping at 100 right now. But you always have, with a volunteer company, you always have your weak time. Because weak time may be Thursday night or Friday night, depending on what's going on. The weak time may be during the daytime. But you have to look at, you have to run reports, and you have to completely or continually analyze what's going on in the department. And we have, they're not requirements, but they're standards set out, 1720 standard is turnout for a volunteer fire company. You have to look at those standards and see if you're complying with them. Apparently, we're complying with them. And we had, I could tell you how many people were on a highway today. I look in the book. The, if we have a fire during the daytime, I look for 15 people. And we exceed that when we have a fire during the daytime. We exceed that at four o'clock in the afternoon. We have a fire, we had a fire, we had over 30 people. We put out the people. There are times that we're weak, but we put out the people. They, the men and the women of the fire service that go out there are dedicated to doing that. You got to understand that that volunteerism, or those firefighters, is a lot different than Little League coach or this. They are on a moment's notice that they have to go. So the guys that went to Route 9 today, went up there a little after two o'clock, they are still on Route 9. They didn't have supper tonight. They didn't see their kids go to sleep. They, there's a huge, huge commitment. It's not only going to training on Monday night or meetings, but when the bell rings, they have to go, and it's a huge commitment to the families. So all this stipend and all this paid on call, all we're trying to do is, we're trying to compete with a part-time job. We're trying to give back to the members so that when they come home with a check, and they're able to take their kids to Disneyland or something like that, families are happy and have, you know. Instead of.
It is. Absolutely.
Having to go the other way. And yes, it probably will, not in my time, but it probably will go the other way.
My question about the retention was, would they pay to put like a bonus in the pension system, like at five years, you get an extra $1,000, at 10 years, you get an extra $2,000, you know, some kind of, to get them to stick around longer is what I was thinking, but maybe that's not the issue.
I'm sure that that would help them. Like I said, we have a couple people that are looking at, and actually, where it all started was after Sharkovich's death. A lot of people, that opened a lot of eyes up. And a lot of people started looking at their insurances, and what are we covered? So we had two individuals that took on a task to go find out where our insurances are, where, what would happen if this happened, what would happen if that happened. State of Connecticut kicked in huge this, this year. Where each firefighter or each emergency service worker, police, fire, EMS, if they get killed in the line of duty, they get $100,000 check. And a lot of times people aren't prepared for the tragedy. So when that check comes out to them, that allows them to get six, eight months down the road so they can figure it out.
Give them a bridge loan.
Yes, right. And that's huge. So anyway, these individuals started off looking at insurances. And then I guess the discussion changed a little bit, and they started looking at different pension systems. And they'll be coming back with some report at some point. I did not touch that in these documents.
I'm very much in favor of the changes you're looking for. I'm just worried it's not enough.
Understand.
Well, I mean, if we look.
I think that we have to be.
I see, I see these guys next door to my house, every night doing something to be ready for when we need them. We don't think about that. You know, it's not just, they rush out that four hours at the call. They're there two, three nights a week, working, 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 you know, just so they can be ready. That's a lot.
I mean, right now, would just be the first step is to get this documented, implemented the way it is. And then, if, you know, we go with what we have, and you do your research, and if we need to add more to it, we can do that. We can amend that anytime, right, Jim?
Got to pay for a fire department.
So I mean, if we, if we amend the document later on, I know the one thing we want to do is get this in place right now. But I mean, if you do your research and everything else, find out we need to amend a document at a later date, we could do that. I mean, for right now, we should get this thing implemented the way it is, and then.
Are the other chiefs happy with us? Everybody kind of on board?
They're happy with this. They love to see more. You asked me that.
But I mean, they think it's a good start, you know?
It's, this is, this is a start. It's a, this is, this is a start.
Yeah, it's, I gotta have a starting point.
This was presented to the Board of Fire Chiefs. Um, we meet every month with the exception of we take summer off like you guys do now. It was, this was presented to them, they were fine with that. Um, in fact, that um, after four hours, that came back from them. They brought it back. I'm sure that, that should be in there. Um.
My goal is to move forward as quickly as possible, get this thing implemented. You said January is probably the fastest.
Well, January for the increase in all the stipends. So if we look at, if we look at the back page.
Yeah.
The requirements are going to be calculated January one because they come off of a lead um, year cycle. And that's when all these doc, uh, numbers are calculated.
So you're working off a calendar?
Calendar, yes. Yeah, and I thought about changing that and my problem, my problem is, is that I won't have a good feel for putting the doc, uh, budget together in November, my final budget goes together and not, not knowing what happened all the way to July. This way I put my budget together, I only, I'm only missing two months. And I can calculate that out, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So, so each category gets a, it, it gets a little additional money, um, which I think they're, they probably would be very happy with.
Okay, how do we, how do we move forward to make that happen? Do we need an ordinance or we just?
Um, so Jeff can weigh in on this too, but the first thing to do was, we wanted to present you the proposed changes. And then if you look, there's some of the, the discussions on what we're looking to do are a little bit complicated because we're trying to combine a um, retirement plan, which is the Robert Wolf, with the existing paid on call and stipend program. And so a, as Jim just mentioned, the fact that the chiefs are discussing the Robert Wolf pension system now means that there may be additional changes or we, we're going to have to come back to that document, I think, at a, at a later date anyway. And so I think uh, Jeff and I had spoken about having uh, our labor attorney involved with the Robert Wolf pension program. I do want to point out, it is time to look at this. If you look at the date, the most recent pension plan that I have on Robert Wolf is amended most recently from February of two thousand and seven. And so it's been, and.
Needs to be looked at.
We, we capped that, if you look, that five hundred dollars per year was effective July one, twenty-ten. So it hasn't been looked at or raised in fifteen years. So it is, and so, so Jim put together, uh, basically uh, working on what we have budgeted, what we can afford for paid on call and for a stipend. And we'd like to make this, we'd like to update the document from the paid on call program to this. The, the, the idea is to make Jim's life easier and to have, if, if you qualify for a stipend, you qualify for Robert Wolf and it's a one stop, instead of having a color-coded sheet, Jim would be able to know uh, who makes what. So at first, so at first, I thought that we, all we needed to do was update the numbers. And maybe that's something that we might want to consider as a first step because the, to combine the documents may take, and I'll defer to Jeff on that, it may take some time to open up the Robert Wolf and to actually get those changes implemented. Um, but if we want to um, match the uh, fire departments paid on call with what we've budgeted for, maybe we do that as a first step and the fire services committee can continue to meet to uh, work on those longer term goals. This is, it may, it may, you know, need a two-pronged approach for that.
What I'm hearing is you have our support and going forward, talk to the labor attorney and let us know what we need to do on our end.
Yeah, let's get, let's take the first step and move forward on this. Couldn't agree more.
Jeff, do you have thoughts on this?
Oh, I think the plan that you've mapped out is the way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't retire till this gets done.
So next steps would be, should we move forward then on increasing the uh, paid on call amounts and the stipend amounts? We'll put that together first and put that together for a proposal for the fire services committee to then bring to the full town council.
Yep, it's a good idea.
That way we'll get that in place while we continue to work on the Robert Wolf. So Jim, you may have your color-coded spreadsheet for a little while longer, but, okay.
Well, we're moving in the right direction, Ryan.
Totally.
Yeah, I agree, Donna. We're moving in the right direction. So I mean, let's just move forward with what we have.
This is.
Talk about all the hours that they put in. So the firefighter in town of Berlin Fire Department stepped up immediately. Put a hundred and sixty-eight hours playing the covering air station. The Berlin Fair, four days of the Berlin Fair, we have two hundred and twelve hours just in fire protection for the town of Berlin and the fairgrounds. In, in the fairgrounds, uh, they responded to twenty medical calls over there, uh, two car fires. The crew that was stationed in town, there's five additional incidents, including a major accident on Chandler Highway at American Town Line. So people don't realize that. They just walk by a fire truck on, on the fairgrounds or whatever and they don't realize, you know, that these crews are out there.
Guys are, they're the front line.
I'm always fascinated by the difference in reward between the different first responders that are at the fair. You know? Some people make a lot of money on it and some people, oh.
Yes.
But uh, we're very lucky to have the firemen and whatever we can do to keep them, we should do.
When do you guys want to meet next?
Whenever you're ready for us.
Yeah, whenever you get the document uh, prepared or whatever we need to do, let us, send out an email, let us know, we'll set a date and a time and we'll, we'll go from there. It doesn't necessarily have to be on a, the night the town council meets. I mean, it, you know, the sooner the better because this is, this is important.
So I think, I think if we can't.
How much time, the thing, question is, Ryan, how much time do you and Jim need on your end to do what needs to be done before we meet again? That's the question right now.
We can sit down, yeah, let's, yeah, we're, yeah.
And then you get, after that, get in contact, yeah, and then get in contact with us and we'll set a date and then go from there.
Okay, well, I think we can shoot for October seventh, the council meeting. We want to set a tentative date for six thirty on the seventh. I think it's the seventh, let me just.
I'm looking now. Yeah, it's the seventh, you're right.
So if, if we want to set uh, the, the committee wants to set a date for six thirty on October seventh, and if for whatever reason, we don't have the document ready yet.
We can cancel.
Cancel it.
Okay, let's do that. Let's do that then.
We good?
Good.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Now you have to make it.
I'm it.
Make motion that we adjourn this. I'm sorry, I'm multitasking, trying to put in my calendar.
And I'll second it.
I guess we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good.